Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Arvada City Council Workshop for January 8th, 2018. Let me get started by having Kristen Rush call the roll, please.
Mayor Williams. Mayor Portem Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer. Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember McGough.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Okay, do I have a motion to excuse Mayor Williams and Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to excuse Mayor Williams and Councilmember Pfeiffer as they're traveling tonight.
Okay, will everyone please vote? All have voted, and there are five yeses and no no's, so those two are excused. So we'll start tonight with our workshops, start with the report on the 2017 Arvada Citizens' Survey. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Portem, members of the council, we're pleased to have Mr. Nathan Wigan of the Northwest Research Group present this information, the summary of the Citizen 2017 Community Survey.
Good evening, thank you guys for having me. As I said, I'm Nathan Wigan, I'm the Research Director with Northwest Research Group, and we spent a lot of time putting together a survey to be held in 2018. There were quite a few changes made over the previous surveys, so this is just kind of an appetite wheder. This is to give you guys an overview of some of the big key findings that were found throughout the survey and throughout the report. I believe most of you have seen the report, it's quite thick, nearly 200 pages long if you include all of the appendices, and there's a lot more information in there. Additionally, if you have any follow-up questions, let Nancy know and we can get you some information, extra data, et cetera. To begin with a little bit of background and objectives, as you probably know, Arvada has been doing biennial surveys since 1997, and the findings are used to help city staff, stakeholders, council members, to help understand how residents perceive the services provided, how to measure services and make improvements as needed, and to gain some insight into what's important to the residents. As I mentioned earlier, there were quite a few changes done between the previous survey wave and this one. We're a new vendor, this is our first time working with you guys, and we brought with us a new methodology. In the past, what has happened was an address-based methodology where a random selection of addresses was drawn, and those residents were sent a paper copy of this survey with a letter asking them to complete the survey, or they can go to a URL and do that survey online. They were then sent one or two reminders behind that. When we did this survey, we kept the basic bare bones behind it. We also used an addressed-based sample. So just like in previous waves, we polled a random selection of about 15,000 addresses within the city limits of Arvada. We then sent that information out to a vendor and said, "Append what you can find." What we're looking for is a phone number, be it landline or cellphone, preferably cellphone if you have it, and an email address. If you can append an email address to an address, to a physical address, give us that information as well. Yes, I know it's scary, Big Brother is watching. We know your name and your phone number. We then reached out to each of these different groups in slightly different ways. If we didn't have any information about you, all we had was an address, and we knew that that address was within the city limits, we would send a letter. The letter would say, "Please participate in this survey. You can do so by either going online or by calling a toll-free number. If you participate this survey, then we'll give you an incentive, a small $5 incentive for doing so." If they only had a phone number, we just called them and said, "Hey, we're doing a survey for the city, please participate." If they had an email address, they all, everyone who had an email address has a phone number. But if they have an email address, step one was to send them an email. Same thing with the letter, "Please come on, take the survey, click here on this link, or call in. If you do so, we'll give you a small incentive." We sent them a couple of follow-up reminders, and to people who did not respond, we would then start calling them and asking them to take the survey as well. Our objective was to get 550 completed surveys. This methodology resulted in 692. You can see the breakout, the majority, about 2/3 of them were done online, about 100 from email, a little over 100 from email and a little over 300 from letters, and then about 250 were done through phone calls. The end result is that we have a margin of error of roughly, I'm going to say 4%, it's a little less than that. And what this means is if we were to repeat this study using the same methodology, we're confident that if we repeated it 100 times, 95 out of those 100 times, the results would be within plus or minus four percentage points of what's being displayed here. You can also see on the right-hand side of the screen, we just break out some demographics in terms of, this is what the sample of individuals looked like. The far-right column is the population, and then the other two columns talk about unweighted and weighted data. Weighting is pretty standard in the survey industry, especially when you're trying to talk to a known population. We know from the census, how many people are 18 to 34, how many are 34, 35 to 54, et cetera. So we do our best to get that proportion of residents through our sampling procedure, but then we do a little bit of weighting to try to adjust it and correct. In its simple terms, a weight is a multiplier. We didn't quite get enough residents who were young, 18 to 34, so we gave them a multiplier of roughly 1.3, a little less than that. Conversely, we got a little higher representativeness from residents over 55 than exists in the population, so when we aggregated their data in, they got a weight down of, say, like 0.85 or something similar to that. A common question that I get in regards to weighting is, "How does this change the survey results?" So I ran this, this is five random questions, I literally just went through and picked them before putting this presentation together and said, "What does the data look like, raw or unweighted, and what is the impact of weighting the data?" The purpose of this slide, I'm not going to go through each of these, but the purpose of this slide is to just show you that there are very little differences. When the methodology is done correctly and the weighting is done correctly, you don't really see much change in your data. So this should alleviate most concerns that people will have with regards to, "How was weighting done? Why did you wait? And what are the impacts of it?" So moving on to the actual results, we ask five questions at the beginning of every one of our citizen or resident surveys. These five questions are then put into a proprietary algorithm, and out of this, we develop what's called a five-star rating. I'm going to go through the five questions, and then I'll show you the five-star rating and how everything works. The first of the five is the overall quality of life, and what we see is that four out of five residents say that the overall quality of life in Arvada meets or exceeds their expectations. There are a couple of differences based off of either demographics or geography, and you'll see some of these throughout the report and throughout this presentation. What you, what we saw on this particular question was that residents living in households with incomes of less than $50,000 are less satisfied with the overall quality of life or have, they say that the expectations aren't quite as, it doesn't, sorry, I messed up here. They're basically less satisfied than higher-income households. We find the same thing with residents who live in Police Sector B. We cut the data by police sectors because it was the most readily available and clean GIS data that we had. Another bit of analysis that we did for each of these five questions, and a couple of other questions throughout the report, is we benchmarked them against our own proprietary benchmarking system. The table at the bottom, well, that chart there, kind of explains, shows how the benchmarking lays out. The green bar, if you compare it, 23% matches or exceeds expectations. So what we're basically doing is it's a net promoter analysis. We're saying the people who are really, really, really happy, like your vocal supporters, the people who say nine or 10 on a scale of 0 to 10, right, they are in most terms called promoters. They actively promote the city, they actively promote ideas, they actively promote things. Then you have the people who really aren't too terribly happy, and that is basically people who say, "Does not meet expectations," and we include your neutral in there. It's a 0 to 6 on this 10-point scale, and they fall into that red bar that you see at the bottom. We then just do some quick math, which is basically subtracting one from the other and adding 100, and we come up with this little score here that we can compare to other communities throughout the country. And what you can see, and we'll go through this on each of these slides, it'll be faster from here, is that you guys are doing a good job. You are above national benchmarks, you're above regional benchmarks, the Mountain District in the US Census, you're above other four-star communities, and you're below 4.5-star communities, but not by much. So it's actually doing pretty strong compared to other communities. It's a very similar story with regard to the quality of city services. We see seven out of 10 residents say that the quality of services meet or exceeds the expectations that they have. This is fairly universal across your residents, regardless of demographic or where they live. And you see the same story with regard to comparison to national benchmarks. You're exceeding national, regional, and other four-star communities, the 4.5-star communities are a little higher. We ask a question, and the wording on this kind of matters, it's, "Compared to other cities and towns, how would you rate Arvada as a place to live?" And then they would, again, rate this on a scale from 0 to 10. We're not asking them to compare Arvada to Denver, or to Fort Collins, or to any other city specifically, it's a completely subjective question where the resident gets to determine, based on what they've heard or what they've experienced in other cities, how they feel Arvada rates. This is also one of the highest-rated answers. You have 79% of residents say that Arvada is somewhat or significantly better than other cities, and you can see that you're outperforming most other benchmarks, and you're pretty much on par with the 4.5-star benchmarks here. The direction that the city is headed is normally one of the most dichotomous questions that we ask. In most cities, we see it's almost an even split between people who say right and wrong direction. So when we're showing just over half believe that Arvada is heading in the right direction, and only 1 in 6 is heading in the wrong direction, that actually is pretty good. I mean, you look at the previous slides and you're like, "Well, we were 80% or 70% positive." This question is designed to be hard. You're never going to make everybody happy, you always have, you know, opposing people. If you make one person happy, you might make another person upset. So the fact that you're keeping over half of your population feeling that you're heading in the right direction should be considered a positive thing. I have seen multiple cities where, you know, your wrong direction is up there in the 30 to 40% range. So while it looks a little low, you know, and as it pans out when you're comparing to benchmarks, it's actually pretty much in line with what it should be. We also asked a follow-up, you know, because everyone wants to know, "Well, if you feel we're going in the right direction, why? If you feel we're going in the wrong direction, why?" And the interesting thing that is unique to Arvada is compared to most other questionnaires or cities that we've talked to, everyone mentions growth somewhere, but nearly every other city mentions growth for the wrong direction, and we never, ever, ever see it as positive growth being something taking a city into the right direction. So that's, to me, that was rather surprising, to see that people say that the growth happening in Arvada, those who feel it's going in the right direction, feel that it's happening because of growth, or that the growth is making the city better. It could be that there's now more restaurants, more places to go, more things to do, but that something is being recognized there. There's actual verbatim comments, which can be made available to you, so you can read through all of them if you really want to. I don't do spell checking, so good luck. Other things that were mentioned were friendly community parks and open spaces. Top mentions for the wrong direction, I mentioned there's growth, that's pretty much always number one for nearly every city when it comes to the wrong direction, is there's too much, too fast, too much growth. Poor management, infrastructure issues generally related to growth, and city council and government, because you can't make everybody happy when you serve on the government. The final five-star question that was asked regards value of services. Previously, we discussed a question regarding the quality of services where you saw ratings were pretty high. Value of services is a different ballgame. This is a question that, again, is intentionally designed to be hard, because we're asking them, when they think about the services and facilities they receive, how do they feel, do they really feel they're getting their money's worth? Think of it like, when you pay taxes, you know, are you getting enough out of your taxes? It is designed to be hard, because no one likes paying taxes. Everyone wants to pay fewer taxes, and everyone wants to get more services, so it's designed to be difficult. If you compare the benchmarks to the previous slides that we saw, you see that those green bars are much, much smaller, and you see that the red bars are much, much longer universally across the board. But still, this is a place that, you know, you're not doing too bad of a job. Over half of your residents say that they're getting their money's worth out of their tax dollar.
Okay, we have a question for you, Councilmember Jones?
Just a quick question on that. So value of services, how, was that defined for them? So they're, whatever value of services is in their mind?
Yes.
And what those services are?
Yes, it is a subjective question. We have done with other communities, we'll do like follow-up, like communities or follow-up focus groups where we dive into it, and oftentimes, we just find out, the biggest thing that we find out is people don't really understand how much of the taxes they pay go to the People see a property tax bill, and they don't recognize that, you know, 70% of it goes to the state, the remaining, you know, 20% goes to the county, 8% goes to the schools, and 1.2% goes to the city.
Yeah, and that's, I think that's, that's the challenge with this question, is that, you know, whatever that value is in their mind?
Yes.
May not be a fair...
It, it is designed to be hard, you know, and it is, everyone, every time I've given this presentation or presentation like this, someone always stops me going, "Well, you said our quality was great, why is the value high?" It's because people, from what we found in other groups, people have a hard time understanding exactly how much they're paying for the services, or exactly what services are provided by It is a little, I'm not sure if it's in the presentation so much as it is in the report, we talk a little bit about transparency and availability of information and how to disseminate information to residents. It is in here, you'll see it as a place to kind of improve upon, and my belief, we've run specific regressions against this and specific analysis for other cities directly against value of services, and we find that oftentimes, is that score for disseminating information and that trust in government score goes up, so does belief in value of services.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
So this leads us to the piece de resistance, the five-star rating. So this is, it truly is a five-star, I think of it like hotels. We can go from a .5 star all the way up to a five-star, and we measure it in half-star increments. You guys have received a four-star rating, and let me give you some information on this. Again, we like to design things to be hard. We don't like things to be easy. So five-star is virtually unattainable. It's like the utopian city where everyone's needs are perfectly met, and they have green grass all year long in the parks. 4.5-star cities are really hard to obtain. I have only seen one city hit it, it was a suburb of Seattle, and the only time we hit it was right after we won the Super Bowl. We did data, we, we didn't think about this. We were doing data collection in the playoffs, and we finished data collection about a week and a half after the Super Bowl ended. And so we got a 4.5-star rating that year. Everything was really, really high, everything was fantastic, and then the next year, it all came back down and leveled out. That's the only time I've seen it, I'm sorry, it was at your expense. But, but that's just to kind of give you an idea, I mean, 4.5-star is actually, you know, it's, again, designed to be pretty hard to meet. Most cities that we talked to fall somewhere between basically three and four. So you guys are on the high end of most cities that we talked to. And this little spider chart that you see is just kind of a summary of all of the different benchmarking. The red line is Arvada, the dashed orange line is other four-star communities, the dashed blue line is other 4.5-star communities, and you can just kind of see the distance that red line is from each of those other dashed lines, how you're kind of doing. As we mentioned, you're doing well on overall quality of life, you're doing really well on comparability, you're right at four-star levels with regards to quality of service and value of services, and slightly below on the direction that the city is headed. And this is kind of interesting, we're going to be updating these benchmarks relatively shortly. I have been noticing in about the past year that direction city is headed has been coming down, so I'm interested to see what happens when I get a trend in my benchmarking data. Okay, so then we did some heavy-duty lifting and analysis. There were more than 25 questions in this survey, but there were 25 questions that were asked of everybody, that were applicable to everybody, that really kind of get down to, what is it that the government does? What is it that the city does? What are the services that you provide? We run what's called factor analysis, which is just a fancy way of my software saying, group these questions, then these questions, then these questions. It basically groups them based off of commonality, not only in subject matter, but also in answers. So we have a group of highly correlated questions grouped together for parks and sports fields, they're similar to each other, yet distinct from government functions, all the questions that follow with them there are similar to each other, distinct from, et cetera. This next slide, this is also a page in the report, shows you how each of the questions fall out, right? Where did each of these 25 questions go? You know, parks, obviously, parks and sports field, et cetera. We then use these, these factors to run what's called key driver analysis, and I'm sure most of you guys have probably heard the term regression before, and probably irked in fear because it just sounds like a scary thing, especially when trying to be described. But it's really pretty simple. In its simplest terms, the key drivers' analysis, or the regression analysis, is looking for a correlation. It's looking for a correlation between the questions we ask and the factors that we put, and how that resident rates Arvada on that five-star scale. Like, each person gets their own, you know, rating for what they feel that the city is. And if a question is highly correlated with their rating with five-star, then we know that that question is a driver. Like, it's something that's, that if we approve upon one, we should be able to improve upon the other. Conversely, if there's a, there's a chart that'll show this in a few slides, but conversely, if there is a question, you know, where the answers are all over the place and there's no correlation, then it's not considered a driver. If you don't want to remember all of that, you don't really care, the secret is just focus on the blue in this chart. What this blue is telling you is these are things that are important to the residents and things that you can improve upon. So planning in life, neighborhoods, transportation, and government transparency are drivers, they're key drivers, they are what drive the residents' feeling of overall satisfaction with the city. Within each of these, you know, you see that planning and quality of life, well, that is an area that could use improvement. What can we do to bring that up? Well, you can focus on creating a more competitive and business environment, or helping to create a competitive business environment, bring more businesses in, is how I translate that, and planning for growth in ways that'll add for quality of life. In transportation, the biggest thing here that stood out, the most important one, and the one that could use improvement, was traffic signal timing, related a little bit to congestion. When looking at government transparency, as we talked about a bit with the value of services, you know, the areas where you could focus on and make real improvements to help bump the city up in the eyes of the residents, is providing information in an open and transparent way, and seeking residents' input and involvement.
17.
So that's basically the key here, is just focus on the blue, and this kind of helps set up some type of priority map.
Presentation's page 17.
It's on page 60 of the report, if you guys are curious. And the page prior to that is a more in-depth explanation of key drivers, and then in the appendix is a three-page explanation of key drivers. So I'm going to give you the Cliff Notes version of the three-page version of a driver. What you're, what you're going to notice here, I'm going to go back, is when you look at government functions, you're looking at, you know, police handling emergencies in an effective manner, right? Everyone's really happy with that, that's doing great, but why is that not a driver? Like, why is that not really driving? Is it important that we're safe? The answer is, yes, it's important that the police do their job, yes, it's important that we're safe, but if you look right here on the right-hand side, there's no correlation between the answers provided and how they rate the city overall. You just have this, it basically, if you look at it, you got 0, 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, you know, you got 5. Your x-axis is how they rate the police department's ability to handle emergencies. Very few people gave a rating under 5, right? Out of 700 people, very few of them gave a rating under 5, regardless of how they feel about the rest of the city. So it just means that, in general, the police are doing a good job responding to emergencies, and there's just no correlation. So aren't police important? Isn't that the basic deal? We ran a second piece of analysis, it's something that's fun, I don't get to do very often, I'm always kind of excited when I do. It's called max-diff analysis. It is a way to figure out relative importance. So most of you have heard the question, you know, rank these on a scale of 1 to 5, and you rank them 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. That's really cool, you now know that, you know, safety's number one, governance is number two, transportation is number three, et cetera, but you don't know how much more important safety is than governance. You just know that it is more important. The other way that people often try to get at this is they say, "If you have $100 and you had to spend it amongst these five, how would you spend that money?" The problem that arises with that type of question is that about half of your people would just go, "20 dollars, 20 dollars, 20 dollars, 20 dollars, 20 dollars," and so nothing stands out. Or you'll have, you know, a couple of people who put all the money in safety, and someone puts all the money in recreation, it's not a realistic scenario. So this max-diff is designed to get at the realistic scenario. We either read this or show it to them on a screen, and the intro is, "Just like a household, a government has to make decisions." You have to say, "This is more important than this." And we show them a list of three out of the five items and say, "All right, here's three things: maintaining an efficient city government, or maintaining and expanding transportation, attracting new industries, or maintaining city parks and trails." You have to pick one to keep, and you have to kick, keep one to kick. That's the most important, least important thing. And then we ask them, again, showing a different mix and match of these priorities. We do this five times, my magical software tells me what works, and out comes one chart. It's about five minutes on the phone, about six minutes online, and we get one chart. But it's really, really powerful, right? It's pretty obvious that the most important thing, the base function of government, is to maintain a city safe from crime. Followed fairly closely are an efficient and effective local government, maintaining a transportation network, and then parks, trails, and sports fields. What's spiffy about this chart is it actually tells you how much more important each of these is than the other. Those numbers have meaning. So that 37.9, I'm just going to round it up, call it 38, is more than twice as important as that 17.7, or round up 18. So what it means is that, you know, the base function of government by far is to make sure that the residents are safe. Then these other three items, effective government, transportation, parks and trails, are all important, but they're all pretty clustered in together. And then the final one, which is a little less important to the residents as far as a core business func, or a core government function, is attracting businesses to the city. So again, you're probably going, "Doesn't this contradict the key drivers' analysis?" Because the key drivers' analysis said that, you know, attracting new businesses is really, really important, it's the key driver to the five-star rating, and safety wasn't a key driver. We're asking two different things, right? You guys familiar with Maslow's hierarchy of needs? Think of it that way. The, the max-diff analysis is really designed to find out what are the core needs, the base functions of government. If all else fails, what do you need to do to keep this government functioning in this city together? And that would be safety, right? And making sure you have a government that works. Those are the basic needs, the physiological needs, the safety needs, and as we start getting those met, we start transitioning more into the upper echelon needs, right? The, the, I can't read, the social belonging, and then finally self-actualization. So the max-diff is really trying to say, get the bottom part of the pyramid out of the way. Once that's done, you can start focusing on the important things to drive up the overall quality of life, you know, better, bigger parks, more exciting restaurants, more places to do, more bowling alleys, et cetera. Those are fantastic, they make for a wonderful city, but if push comes to shove, you got to meet these basic needs. So that's how all those different pieces of analysis kind of fit together, and that's really the bulk of what's in this presentation, is working on those pieces of analysis. If you have questions, now, ask. If you have questions later, let us know, and we'll, we'll do our best to answer them.
Okay, I don't see any questions, so go ahead.
Okay. So we asked a question, this is a fun one, I've only gotten to ask it once in any other survey, and it's basically asking people to compare their overall well-being, you know, which, I'm trying to read the text up there, it can include physical, mental, emotional, health, as well as financial stability, social relationships, access to transportation. Look at all of the things that make up well-being, and say, "How are you doing compared to last year? Are you doing better or worse?" And about half of residents say that they're doing better, and about half of residents say that they're doing the same. And there are a small number, about 5%, who say that they're doing worse than last year. It's an interesting question, just to get a completely subjective point of view, are you better off or are you worse off than you were last year? There's not much to it, it's just an interesting question. So this is a fun one. We went round and round about single hauler trash and recycling, not only whether to include it, but how specifically to ask it, and finally, how to report it. and finally, how to report it. I came up with two ways to report it. It's here. It's also on page 79 and 80, I believe, of the report.
Before you get to how you report it, I've got a question for you.
Sure.
How did you decide to include it? What was it that prompted you to say, "This ought to be in the survey", versus other things that said, "This ought to not be in the survey"?
I'll go back to Ben.
We talked about it at a staff level, and then Mr. Devon had included some information to all of you over the course of a couple of weeks to ask, you know, "We're gonna ask this. Here are some different ways, some different ways that we could ask the question." So as Nathan said, we struggled with the wording. How are we gonna put it? But we went back and forth between council and staff, and with the consultants, to come up with a way to word it that made the most sense from, you know, what kind of information do we want to get out of this?
Okay. Thank you.
And so the wording that we came up with, again, with the goal being as neutral as possible. "The city has considered some form of single-hauler or consolidated curbside trash and recycling system, either community-wide or by district. What is your level of support for this collection service in Arvada?" And they were said, "Zero means strongly opposed, and 10 means strongly support." Where do you fall in? So if we just look at the data, raw, as presented, you actually see that there's quite a bit of support. About 2/3 of the residents across the city are in favor of something like this. They support this idea. There are, of course, differences, primarily based off of where they live. Where you see residents who live in Police Sector B, just over half of them support this. But again, we like to make things hard. So I talked about this net promoter analysis earlier, and we applied the same analysis to this. So I'm gonna switch back and forth between these slides here, so that you can see. Look at the green, where we have 42% across the board, then 46, then 33. That's just that very, very top echelon. That's just the people who say, "I strongly support this." So, for this analysis on this slide, we're going, "Only the people who say they strongly support this really actually do." Everybody else doesn't really actually support it. They just say, "Yeah, sure, I support it." But when it comes to not supporting it, you know, more people than actually come out and say, "I hate this," don't support it. The analogy we came up with earlier today was thinking about, like, cable, like Comcast. You know if Comcast or Quest? There's a Quest out here. Oh, Quest? Comcast? Okay. Think about Comcast, right? Really, in all honesty, how often do you hear someone come up and say, "I love my cable company"? You don't. The only people who say that are the people who've had something extraordinary happen, something really, really cool happen. So the theory behind this net promoter analysis is just that. We're saying only the people who really like this are the ones who are gonna be vocal supporters. So the people who strongly agree, the 9s and 10s, those are the only ones who are vocal supporters. But everybody who's had a problem happen, whether it be big or small, is gonna be a detractor. They're gonna come out and say, "Hey, something went wrong." Even people who are meh about Comcast, who they're neutral, they don't really care one way or the other. If something happens, they're gonna come out and say, "You know, they messed up on my bill. It razed," or "My internet went down," whatever. So that's why we include a much larger group of people into the non-supporters. We go from zero to six on this scale, from zero to 10. All the way from zero to six is included in the non-supporters category. And the supporters are only that top echelon, that 9, 10. And the idea is, you have two really vocal groups. Which of these really, everyone else just falls somewhere in the middle, and, you know, will probably split out evenly, if you really wanted push come to shove.
Hey, we have a question here for you. Councilmember Jones?
And if you said this, I apologize, but the sectors, are those police sectors?
Yes.
Okay. Interesting, 'cause, I don't know, it seems like Sector D up in the Candelas area, they already essentially have a single-hauler platform. So, which may be why they support it. But I don't know, just interesting that that raised, was higher than, say, any others, or not any others, but like A or C. So anyway, just interesting that, how that worked out.
We were, they were talking about this in the staff meeting earlier today, so, yeah. So the way that we, the way that you can kind of summarize this, and make sense out of these two, is if you were to, we've done this analysis on voter-level initiatives. And we've done it for transportation initiatives on voter level. And we've done, basically, this analysis, which is a slight minor tweak that is for the specific objective. The theory is, if you were to put this up for a vote, right? The strong supporters would vote for it. The non-supporters would vote against it. And then everyone else who's not included in this, your wishy-washies, your somewhat supports, will probably just end up being split in one way or the other. So, you know, you can really only count on 42% voting for it, and 37% going against it. And then you look at the difference. What's the difference between these? Well, five. So, in theory, this is not, you know, a voting prediction. This is just to kind of give you an idea of how to think about this. In theory, you know, if this were to go to a ballot measure, you could say, "It would probably pass." Right? We're saying that 5% more people strongly support it than oppose it, but our margin of error is 4%. So again, you're looking pretty close there. But when you look at it overall, if this were just something that were done, you know, and it just happened, well, you actually have a pretty decent amount of support. 2/3 of your residents would not complain. That 20% of your residents who are neutral, some of them may complain. And then you'd have about 17% of residents who would complain. That's kind of a way of looking at how to weigh these two pieces of analysis. It's like, if you just went ahead and did it, you'd have some people who are really upset, but the majority of the people would either be like, "Oh, that's a good idea," or not care. If you left it up to the residents, you'd have a vocal majority in favor of it, a vocal minority opposed to it, and it'd be really close. Any other questions on that?
Don't see any questions. Go ahead.
So the final section involves another controversial topic, housing affordability. It's not you. It's everywhere, I promise. It's just, it's a big issue everywhere. Every city that we have done over, and it has just appeared, if you're curious, over about the past two to three years, it has become a hot-button issue in every city that I have talked to. So we asked a question, you know, and the question was, "If you were looking to buy a home in Arvada, and thinking of terms and being able to afford a place to live, so thinking about affordability of a home, would you say that there are no good options? Only a few good options, some good options, or many good options?" And you see, it's pretty evenly split. Between people who, I'm gonna call the blue and green good, and the orange and red bad, right? It's pretty evenly split between people who feel that there are options out there, and people who don't feel that there are options out there. And this was one of the most interesting areas in terms of parsing the data from demographic standpoints and from geographic standpoints, because a lot of differences are coming out here. Right? So the people who feel that there are the fewest options, the people who live in Police Sector B, younger residents, those under 55, even more so, those under 35, or 35 and younger, you know, feel that there aren't enough options for them out there. Lower-income residents, which we're defining as household incomes of less than $50,000. Only 10% say that there are many good options, and 62% believe that there are few to know good options. And the final group out there is renters. You know, only 5% of your renters feel that there are good options, good affordable places to live for renters. And, you know, the chart, the text, it kind of breaks it out. There's, there are a lot of differences here. So, then came the other controversial question. Which is, all right, if you were looking to buy, oh, I didn't update the question text. The question text on this basically was, you know, "Would you support multifamily housing to bring down the cost of housing in Arvada?" Right? And it was an agreement scale. I can't remember the exact question text. My apologies for not updating it. But that was basically it. Okay? It's like, "Do you agree that Arvada should build more multifamily housing to increase affordability and availability?" And it's pretty evenly split. A third, a third, a third, right? A third of the people say, "Yes, I agree with this." A third of the people say, "I don't really care. I'm neutral on the matter." And a third of the people say, "No, don't do it." This is what you look for when you look for divisive data. But just with the other housing affordability issues, you see that there are big differences based off of who they are and where they live. Renters, as would be expected, are much more likely than owners to feel that you need to create more multifamily housing. Because as we saw on the previous slide, they can't afford the housing that's out there already, so they need more. The interesting, this is the only difference that we found based off of race, where your minority residents are much more likely than your white-only, non-Hispanic residents to think that increasing multifamily housing is an important thing to do. Finally comes, finally comes income. You know, where you see a much larger proportion of people with lower incomes feeling that we need to increase multifamily housing versus people with higher incomes. And I realized in the parentheses, those are in the wrong spot, but the numbers are correct. And two percentage points off. So the basic deal is, right, you, all over citywide, it's a pretty divisive issue, but it's primarily divided based off of your socioeconomic status. And that's really it, in terms of the bulk. Are there any additional questions?
Okay. Questions from council? Pretty good. Looks like we don't have any questions. Thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate it.
If you think of any, let Nancy know, and we'll get back to you. Thank you, guys.
Great. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have a report on the Jefferson Parkway. Mr. Devon?
Yeah, Mayor Protam Marriott, I think, Nancy, I'm sorry, Maria.
Maria.
My apologies.
We're entertaining.
Maria has a couple of concluding comments.
Okay. And Maria, I'm sorry for not coming to you first, so, thank you.
Oh, no, no problem. I just wanted to let you know that, first of all, the final report will be posted on our website tomorrow. So it's now accessible to the public, as of tomorrow morning. And Northwest Research is going to be getting me the breakdown of all of the data, which will be, I know Nancy's just really excited about that. Councilmember Ford, excuse me. And any additional analysis of any of the questions, please just let us know. We can do further breakdowns for you. But I just did want to clarify that this will be available to the public tomorrow morning.
Great. Thank you.
The only other thing I would add is that I expect that between this and the demographics report that we saw last month, there will be much to discuss at the retreat and in future workshops.
I would agree. Okay, so let's move on to the Jefferson Parkway. Mr. Devon?
Yes. Bill Ray will make that presentation. Thank you.
Here and I had gotten excited, and I thought Maria was gonna do this, so. Thank you, Mayor Protam Marriott, members of council. My purpose in tonight is that with the start of the new year, is just to briefly report an update for you, the status and the next steps of the Parkway. As you will recall from your own strategic result, as well as from the budget presentation that we had made, my commitment to Arvada, as well as to the authority, was to move this process along to a point whereby, at the end of this year, is that we would have definite direction as to whether the project is financially feasible or not. And that this was really to be a year decision, and I would say it's shaping up to be exactly that. So, I've put up the first slide, just as a reminder, about the project that we were talking about, approximately 10 miles. That stretches from 93, about a mile north of West 64th Avenue, and ends up on Highway 128, connecting into the Interlock and Loop in Broome Field. Unless there are any questions on that, I really wanted to just spend this. And of course, this is a chart that I didn't intend for you to read, but simply to be able to identify the three colors that are in there. The three colors being the yellow, is that we have entered into the project feasibility phase of this. The authority has been fortunate enough to contract with Mr. Don Hunt, former director of CDOT, who's leading the authority's efforts on the procurement pursuit team. He has put together a team that includes, Ernst &amp; Young is the authority's financial advisor, the firm of CDM Smith, that is doing our traffic and revenue study, the firm of HDR, which is doing a lot of the costing and forecasting and updating of that. All of this is leading to a decision point by the end of March, which is the last box in yellow, where there will be a report that Mr. Hunt will present to the authority that basically indicates our best understanding of the overall present financial feasibility of the project.
Mr. Ray, let me interrupt you real quick. I have a question from Councilmember Ford.
Bill, I just have one quick question on the right-of-way for the Jefferson Parkway.
Yes.
Does that show different characteristics of the land? Like, if we have utilities there, you know, why that line isn't the same width? Or does that have no bearing?
It really is conceptual at this point. The project still sits at about a 2% conceptual level of engineering. So I wouldn't put a great deal of faith in looking at the details of that. But it does, I mean, we are clear about where the right-of-way is, and we have worked very diligently in terms of the acquisition of that. As I will touch on very briefly, certainly at 128, while Jefferson County is the owner of the property, we continue to have conversations with the FAA about an easement, if you will, that must be lifted in order for the Parkway to be able to utilize that property. That's one of the ongoing short-term discussions that we have. I would say, overall, is that there is as high an interest in the infrastructure and engineering and design sectors in anticipation of this as I have seen in my nine-plus years of being involved in this process. The project is becoming very visible. There's a very high level of interest out there in terms of potential private-public partnerships. And so I think that now is the appropriate time to be able to move forward and make that determination of financial feasibility. Presuming that the authority is prepared to move forward based on that analysis, the boxes in green are basically the project development phase, which you'll notice are very short. It's only about five months. That's really the period of time where we finalize what the form of our offering will be out to the private sector. We begin to get our legal folks involved in some of the ideas about what a long-term contract would look like. Probably the centerpiece of this particular period is a request for information, where we will go out and we will ask industry leaders, basically, for their thoughts and ideas about how to best proceed with this project. Again, the determination at that point is having checked in, basically, by early fall this year, would be leading into the actual project procurement phase, where we would put out a formal request for proposal, or request for qualifications, identify who the potential private partners would be, select one, and move forward with the bottom box on the far right being financial close, which is projected for August of 2019. So as you can see, this is a very aggressive schedule. It is one that, based on the advice that I'm receiving, as well as my own experience, such as it is, and acknowledgement about the certain state of infrastructure projects and the potential for public-private partnerships, I believe is still the best course. It's a very aggressive course, but I think one that will lead to a firm decision one way or another this year. That's really the report that I wanted to provide you with, but I'm certainly happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Okay. Question from Councilmember Jones?
Mr. Chairman?
Could you just speak quickly to the Citizens Committee, or Committee?
Absolutely. Part of the work that the authority has done, and its initial meeting will be on the 18th of this month, is convening a citizens' group that will represent a broad diversity of opinion and a broad variety of interests and/or concerns with the Parkway that will come together on a periodic basis, simply to advise the commission over time, or, sorry, the authority over time, about the perspective from the community. This is probably a fairly unique citizens' advisory group in that part of their charge of work is not necessarily to come to consensus, but really to fairly represent the number of differing opinions, ideas, objectives, and perspectives that exist about this project, and to be able to share that information with the authority board over time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember McGough?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Ray. I've got a couple of questions. One, you mentioned property owned by Jefferson County. Are you referring to the airport land?
Yes, sir.
And the FAA, and where are we with getting a determination from the powers that be about the utilization of that land at the corner of the airport?
Thank you for your question, Councilmember McGough. The authority has contracted with the firm of Venable, which is based out of Washington, DC, that has an excellent working knowledge of the ins and outs of the Department of Transportation. Transportation and the Federal Aviation Administration in terms of really understanding what the FAA's concerns are and how we can best respond to them. The work that Mr. James Burnley, who is specifically representing the authority back there, provides the authority with periodic updates. He continues to be very optimistic about his conversations at the FAA National Office, and I expect we'll hear more from him shortly yet this month in terms of what his progress is.
So it seems to me that's a go-no-go kind of decision that we're waiting on. Is that true, or is it kind of a go this way, or we make some major changes at that point?
If the FAA sticks with its present position, it would cause for some major rethinking about the project. There are certainly alternatives in terms of what our desired alignment is, which we've in fact presented to the FAA, not in the hopes that necessarily it is to show that it is possible to go forward with this project without the use of that land, but is not the most desirable and is certainly not the most economically viable.
But Venable is optimistic?
So they tell me.
Okay. That's good. The other question I have too, just looking at the very large picture of the economy, you know, that we keep talking about, or I read and hear about the business cycle, and one of these days it's going to kick in and things are going to turn down in the general economy. Well, that put, I mean, it seems to me that it would put a public-private partnership into great jeopardy if that should happen. Is that?
I certainly share some of that concern. I guess it's important to also remember that many of the financing firms that are involved in this sector truly are looking out for the long term. These are, oh, for example, pension funds are an excellent example of people that have, you know, a constant cash inflow and are looking for an investment that will be able to pay out over the period of 30 or 40 or even 50 years. So they come at this with a much, I mean, they're certainly sensitive to the current economic cycle, but they also look beyond it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay. Mr. Ray, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from staff? No? Okay.
I'm sure we'll have a chance to discuss this more at your upcoming retreat. So I appreciate the opportunity to inform both you and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have traffic safety. Mr. Devon?
Yes.
Are we looking for a break here, Mr. McGough? Okay. So we'll take a quick stand-in-place break. Take a little stretch. Yeah, thank you.
...with them about video detection or video observation. Rather than have the officer just sit there for a bunch of hours, we'll go record data and we can review it with them if necessary. Part of that formula is the A and C, the Analyze and Communicate. The component of our traffic analysis in engineering includes following national safety standards to investigate traffic speeds, the volume of traffic, and crash history. The reference we reach for most often in traffic engineering is the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, or the bottom left of your screen there. That's the cover of that guiding document. The MUTCD, as we call it, is published by the Federal Highways Administration. Another guiding document, published by American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, is what we call the Green Book. That's the green cover that you see here. The longer title is "Policy on Geometric Design of Highways and Streets." It's kind of a long title, so we just call it the Green Book. But these two guiding documents were really one of the basis for developing and updating the city engineering standards. They're national, federal standards for uniform traffic control devices and roadway design. They're also what was used as part of the process when we developed our VADA Bicycle Master Plan. Another component of analysis is looking at crash history, accidents if you will. We utilize software called the Vision Zero Suite here at the City of Arvada. It's the same suite that the state uses, so Colorado DOT, as well as some of our sister agencies along the front range. And in the center of this slide is a screen capture of the first component of that software. It allows us to look at the last five years of crash history at any location in the city. So if there was a crash and a police officer wrote a crash report, it's in this software database. The second component allows us to take the number of crashes, let's say Kipling and West 58th Avenue, if we knew how many crashes were there. And maybe you folks might ask us, "How are we doing? How do we know how we're doing?" The second component allows us to compare that location, how many cars, how many crashes, what did the intersection look like? Was it four legs or two legs or a T-intersection? And it allows us to do a data sweep, if you will, to go out and throw our net real wide and look at comparisons to other cities of similar facilities. So that same size intersection in Westminster, how is, how are we doing? Do we have more or less crashes than them? How is it compared to something in Lakewood? Part of this formula is the communication part. So when we get through doing the analysis, we will round back with the police department and talk to them about what we found. If the communication came in through a citizen or some other reporting party, we will contact them again, as will the police department if it came through PD, and we'll let them know what we found out and what we're planning on doing. The final letter of RGACI is Implement, and it's a two-part process where proactive approach occurs in the office and the field. This first part really is, this slide's intended to show you that we have a role in development plan review and capital improvement projects. So in traffic engineering, we take those safety standards, those guiding documents that we had on a previous slide, and our own city standards, and our role is to ensure that those are part of roadway projects, intersection projects, construction projects, that those safety standards are followed. One of the biggest things that we do in traffic engineering is we oversee access control. So where's your driveway? Is it in a turn lane? That sort of thing, that decision-making process. And if you look at the left side of the screen, there's what looks like a big plus sign with some arrows on it and a bunch of dots and circles in the middle. What this is meant to show, this is a figure we use a lot in traffic engineering, it's a roadway. It's a four-legged roadway that's basically showing one direction of travel, northbound, one eastbound, one southbound, and westbound. And what all the little circles show us is that as if these four cars come up and meet each other in this intersection, in this particular case, there's 32 circles, or 32 opportunities for us to crash into one another. So it's important to control who has a stop sign, where, is this a traffic signal? Can we see each other and maintain access control? We take the results from this formula, we summarize the information, and what do we do with it in the office? Well, we will typically do two things. The first of which is apply for federal grant funding, highway safety improvement projects, if you will. We call them HSIPs. It's federally funded monies, if you will, that are overseen through Colorado Department of Transportation's local agency process, where they basically fund our construction projects. We do have a component of match that you all are aware of. But an example of an HSIP that's happening right now that this room's probably very interested in is West 58th Avenue and Ward Road. So we have received federal funds to reconstruct that intersection, to provide a more safe condition, more turn lanes, improved pedestrian crosswalks, wider sidewalks, better corner islands. And on the southwest corner, I believe there's a 7-Eleven where the turn lane isn't continuous. So you have to pull out into southbound Ward instead of staying in an acceleration lane. That will be widened so that you won't have to merge with traffic as soon to present a more safe condition.
Adam, let me interrupt you real quick and ask you a question there. So those HSIP funds, how long of a process is that for the city to apply for and be awarded and then have access to those type of funds? Is that a multi-year process, or is it quicker than that? And does it match the speed at which kind of the city's department works on designing improvements and implementing improvements?
It's slower. It's slower. We have our own process, the capital improvement projects, if you will, and I'll talk about that shortly. But due to right-of-way, the process with federal funds to obtain right-of-way and other things of that nature, there's more restrictions on what we can and can't do. So the schedule is longer, if you will. Depending upon the nature of the project, if it's a great big interchange or something, you know, that process is much longer. In the case of something like this, it's a year. It's about a year to find out if it's feasible or not, if you will.
And one last question. I would imagine those are kind of competitively granted or competitively asked for, given the need and the amount of funding for those types of projects, how, how big a gap would there be? Or I assume there's a gap. Is there a gap? And if so, how big a gap is there from those type of funds to what, what's really needed?
So they're more competitive every year. Specifically, the Tiger grant funding and the larger projects are very, very competitive. But, I'm sorry, what, is the question about the gap between our funds?
Well, not necessarily our funds, but you know, if, if there's federal funding available to make these highway safety improvements, you know, intersection improvements and stuff, I would, I would imagine, so I guess my first question would be, is do we have more needs than their grant funds available?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We do.
And, and if, if that's the case, you know, how competitive is the pool of trying to, trying to get those funds versus when do we, as a council, make the decision to, to spend our own funds on it as opposed to federal funds that we may have?
Sure. So by default, if there's low-lying fruit, we go and try and grab it. So our first response or first way we implement is to go get funding elsewhere outside of city dollars. If that stalls, that's when we start to develop a capital improvement project that will alleviate that need with our own funding. We try to separate those two. We identify pools of monies that we can go after and say, "Okay, let's concentrate city funds over here and work until this process breaks down." That's currently what we're doing.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet. So we do develop capital improvement projects, the city-funded projects, if you will. Some are done as part of a larger drainage project or some other need that isn't tied to safety. But we do, in traffic engineering, work closely with our neighbors in the civil engineering group and have our own intersection improvement projects, if you will. The best example I have for that is at West 72nd Avenue and Indiana Street. That intersection has been redesigned. Instead of one lane in each direction coming up to the intersection, a tiny little intersection with no turn base, there's great big wide turn lanes. There's right and left turn lanes will be added, a new traffic signal, better corner radiuses for trucks to turn, to provide refuge for pedestrians. That's a, that's a biggie for the city, and that's going to bid here in the next month or two and will be constructed next year. That's all city funds. That's not something where we could have readily received highway safety improvement funds, so we did it ourselves.
With no help from CDOT.
It is a state highway and we did it ourselves. Yes, sir. So the second part of that implementation is, well, what do we do in the field? We talked about in the office that we develop construction plans and such, but what else do we do? Well, we do a lot of work without plans, if you will. We have signing and pavement marking projects where we utilize our traffic maintenance staff. In the upper-left corner here, two of our maintenance staff workers are installing a pedestrian crossing sign near a school crosswalk. That's just something that we do. We don't need a project to do that. We regularly are going out and looking at our safety at our crossings. As part of that, in the bottom-left corner, this is Independence and Grandview. So this is a concrete pedestrian refuge that we added. It wasn't part of the project. We, we just added it on at the end without plans. We worked with the contractor and said, "This needs to be here." We provided reflective crosswalk, as well as rapid repeating flashing beacons underneath the sign and a pedestrian push button, so that as the folks come up the hill, traveling north to south, there's some big flashing warning signs letting them know that pedestrians are in the crosswalk. This is part of a larger effort to get folks over to the transit hub, Kipling, this follows a larger pedestrian path that goes underneath Kipling Street and allows for folks to walk over to that rail station. Additionally, what we do is work with Dr. Cog, the Denver Regional Council of Governments, to regionally time our traffic signals, to ensure that our corridors, the traffic signals are talking correctly amongst themselves and presenting the right amount of green time so you don't stop a bunch in the city. This has occurred in the past on the West 80th Avenue corridor, the West 72nd corridor, West 64th, so when Kipling Street turns west, starting right there, all the way out towards Indiana Street. And currently, while we worked with Dr. Cog and their team to develop those timing plans in the past, right now, because of the opening of the Walmart, the Ralston Shops, the work going on with Apex Fields along the Ralston and West 58th Avenue corridor, we're going to go out in the next two months and collect data along this corridor and retime all of the traffic signals from Old Wadsworth to Ward Road. So there are currently a mishmash of timing plans and things. There's timberline apartments have been built there, some other developments. So we take all that new traffic into account. We know what traffic is coming and proactively go out and do our best to get these traffic signals to communicate with each other and provide the most safe condition. In this picture in the middle, this is right outside of City Hall. This is Ralston Road and Balsam Street intersection. That just shows that we can click on intersection at any time and see, is this traffic signal working? Is the detection working? And in the picture on the left with a bunch of green bars, that's kind of difficult to see, but this is right from, from our computer in my office. It says, "All these green bars mean these signals are talking to each other. They're operating properly."
Thanks, Adam. So we'll talk a little bit now about what we do in the police department. And as I talked about earlier, we use data as well. And I wanted to just include this slide that just talks a little bit about accidents and crashes that we've seen over the last couple of years, 2016 and 2017. And I only included the top seven types of crashes that we've had in the city over those couple of years. And this information comes from a system that we utilize in the police department. It's called Lumen. Lumen is a pretty powerful search engine for us, and being able to drill down this information, we can go in and bring this information down to basically an every hour occurrence. In other words, the parent company for Lumen goes into our system and they pull all of our data on an hourly basis. And so if I were to go in and ask right now, you know, "How many accidents have we had at a particular intersection?", it would give me data that's only an hour old. And I can set my own time parameters in there for how much time I want to look at. And that's where this slide comes from over the last couple of years and, and the types of crashes that we've had. Right now, all of our officers, I say all of our officers, it's not quite all of our officers, we've had kind of an influx of new officers, and so they're yet to be trained on the use of Lumen. But we tried to get all of our officers trained in the use of Lumen so that they can go in on their level and look at high accident locations. Where have we been doing a lot of traffic enforcement activity? Where have we been writing citations? Where have we had DUI accidents? Things of that nature, so that they can utilize that data to even plan their day on occasion if, if that's not been sent to them through either a commander or their sergeant's special watches that have been put in and then read to them. So we try to get all of our officers trained up so that they're able to utilize that system as well. Sector commanders use the data that comes from Lumen to really determine how we're going to deploy our resources on a daily, weekly, monthly, and quarterly, or maybe even longer than that basis. Through that data, we may end up deploying resources for a special project, whether it be burglaries, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as well with, with some of that. And then one of the things that we utilize that information for is, is we may create what we call a DPI, or a Directed Police Intervention Area. And that may be an area, it may be a traffic situation. Wrong one. And so I'll talk to you a little bit about what a DPI is. And as I said, they're kind of twofold in nature. They can either be criminal in nature or traffic in nature. On the criminal side, we might look at burglary patterns, first-degree criminal trespass patterns, those are break-ins to cars, and then assign officers to work those. Like in a first-degree criminal trespass situation, those might be occurring overnight. So we would assign resources to work a specific neighborhood if we're seeing an increase in those overnight. In the traffic situation, we would look at high accident locations. It might be based on complaints as well, as I spoke to you earlier, where we get those complaints from, whether they come through Ask Arvada or we attend HOA meetings, things of that nature, where we get complaints and we'll incorporate that into our data and look at, is this an area that would be worth doing a directed police intervention for? We usually try to time-bound those directed police intervention because they do, a lot of times, take a lot of resources. So we look at, you know, when we think we can do the best in, in trying to mitigate, again, whether it be criminal activity or in the case of a, of a traffic situation. I want to talk to you about one in particular that was just done in 2017 by one of my counterparts. For those of you that I'm sure know, most of you probably know, Commander Portia Hensley. She is currently the commander that's over Charlie Sector, which is the sector that's in the southwest portion of the city. She was taking the data from Lumen and looking at it, both for criminal directed police intervention and also traffic-directed police intervention. In this case, I wanted to highlight a traffic DPI that she did back in the second quarter of 2017. She really looked at the data leading up to 2017, so prior to beginning of the year through 2016, and seeing that we were having high accident locations within her sector were up and down the 64th Avenue corridor and also the Ward Road corridor. And then in the first quarter, she was still seeing that, that those were her high accident locations up and down both of those corridors. So then she instituted a DPI, that Directed Police Intervention, in this case, for the second quarter of 2017. And what that amounted to was that she let both the sector officers and then our traffic unit officers know, okay, this is the types of accidents, again, going back to the chart that I had up a couple of slides ago, talking about, again, the high accidents in the city being rear-end accidents. And those don't usually occur right at an intersection, they're leading up to the intersection. So how can we look at, how do we mitigate those types of crashes leading up to the intersections? How can we work enforcement and be visible? She looked at all the different ways that she could impact some of the right-of-way issues that we were having at the intersection of 64th and Ward. And she put those out to the officers to also then, for them, to use their own creativity as well, to look at, how do we really try to impact the accidents that were occurring along both of those corridors? And so then during that second quarter, she saw a 31% increase in traffic citations that were issued along both of those corridors because officers were taking that to heart, that DPI area. When they had the time that, that they could go out and work those areas, they were doing so. They were taking the data that they were given, looking at those crash types, and, you know, writing citations which were appropriate for distracted driving, driving or following too closely, running a red light, things of that nature. And for that entire quarter then, they worked that area quite a lot. And then in the third quarter, she moved her DPI, frankly, to a criminal DPI, to a different location within her sector. But then looked back at the data to look at, okay, what was the impact that we had in that situation? And what she saw was, is that for the third quarter then, we saw a 10% decrease in the accidents along the 64th Avenue and the Ward Road corridors. We also saw a 34% decrease in citations just along those two corridors, not, certainly not in her entire sector. And that 34% decrease in citations really put the citations back in line with where the citations were in the first quarter of the year. But even with that, the citation level being at that level that they were in the first quarter, we saw a 10% reduction in accidents. Now she may go back, and like I said earlier, she may go back and look at that and say, "We need to do some maintenance along there. Maybe for a couple-week period, we'll institute again and ask officers through our electronic briefing, let's go back out and work that area hard again for enforcement purposes." Again, looking at the data that shows, what are we seeing for accidents along there again? That's really up to her and that's the power that we're given for each of our sectors as commanders, to look at the data and then institute those. And so she may very likely do that again. At this point though, I'm not sure what her first-quarter goals are and her first-quarter DPIs are. We're just in the process of putting those together. And then I wanted to talk to you briefly about a complaint, and this was actually a variety of complaints, frankly, that we received. In a neighborhood that's actually in my sector, this is regarding the Saddle Brook neighborhood. For those of you that are familiar with the Saddle Brook neighborhood, it's on 74th Avenue, just west of Indiana. 74th Avenue is the main east-west street that goes through the Saddle Brook neighborhood. This was kind of a historical case because we had been getting complaints in that neighborhood for quite some time. I had taken several of those myself. We attended one of their HOA meetings and talked to them about what we were seeing from an enforcement side, and, and yet we continued to get complaints. And in fact, some of you sitting here may have gotten complaints from folks that live in that neighborhood as well. And again, as I said, we want to make sure that if we can impact and help mitigate some of those issues that they're seeing and give them a better quality of life, we certainly want to do that. So we started to delve further into some of the data. I asked traffic engineering at the, at the time to see whether or not they had a, a recent speed study that had been done, because this was a complaint regarding speeding. There had been a speed study that was done about four months prior to when I started getting involved with the complaints that were coming in regarding speeding in that neighborhood. The speed study that they had done in the neighborhood did not indicate any times that showed that there was a glaring problem for speeding within that neighborhood. But I asked, because it was four months old, maybe we could do an additional speed study and look at, had something changed even in that four-month period since the prior one had been done? I was accommodated. We did another speed study, and it was very similar to the first one that we did. We again met with the HOA from there, talked to them about the circumstances. The gentleman, there was one particular gentleman that was very vocal and that he had been one that I had spoken with personally a couple of times regarding the speeding issues in there. And it finally took that I had my traffic sergeant go out, meet with him on 74th Avenue, and sit with him with a speed device, much like the one in the picture, and have him estimate what he felt a car was traveling, what speed it was traveling at coming around the curve. And that's part of the, the demographic there, is there's a curve in the street. Curves often give some additional, it makes you think that cars are going faster than they might possibly be, depending on the, the way the curve is done. And so he would estimate the speed, and then my traffic sergeant would show him on the speed device that in fact he was well within the speed limit when he was thinking that they were well over the speed limit. And that actually occurred, that's been some time ago, and I've not received any complaints from that gentleman since. And I don't know if any of you have or not, but I'm glad to think that at least we had some impact and, and hopefully let him know and educated him somewhat as well that, that, you know, we did, and we did work the area up there for enforcement as well, but, but we didn't write any citations either up there. We have, we have several where we've had very similar complaints that we go out and sure enough, we get violations, we, and get the speed study back that gives us specific times of the day where we know, okay, these are the times that we really need to go out and work enforcement. This just didn't happen to be one of them. So I talked about our traffic unit a little bit. I want to talk to you about them. That's our fairly recent photograph, even though we've seen a couple of changes in our traffic unit. Our traffic unit is made up of motorcycle officers and then officers that are specifically assigned to work in cars. They're responsible for sector. They're each assigned to one of our four sectors. In those sectors, they're responsible for contacting reporting parties that, that make complaints. I may send them an Ask Arvada complaintant. Generally, I'll try to contact that complaintant to get a little bit of information first, then I'll forward it to one of the officers to go out and talk with them, either on the phone or talk with them personally. Sometimes that contact leads to what they're complaining about, maybe one specific individual that is a constant problem in the neighborhood, and we've even gone to those people's homes, had a conversation with them, let them know, "Hey, your neighbors at least have the perception that you're driving too fast," or "You're going through a stop sign," something like that, so that we're not just sitting out there waiting for them to run through a stop sign and write a citation and educate them to let them know, "Your neighbors aren't happy with your, with your driving behavior." Generally, we won't do that if it's just a single complaint, but if we get multiple complaints, particularly on one individual, then we'll go out and try to contact them individually. And we do that with our traffic officers. They're also responsible for those specific enforcement areas and high accident locations. Again, they worked heavily on the DPI with Commander Hensley in that second quarter of Our traffic unit is also trained to do dignitary and other escorts. They also, each of them are assigned to one of our CART teams. Our CART teams are, it's a Critical Accident Response Teams. They respond on our most serious accidents, whether they be fatal accidents or serious bodily injury accidents. They certainly responded to our fatals in 2017. And then we're also in the process of getting some of our expertise rebuilt up. In the traffic unit, we have, in the past, had three reconstructionists within the unit. One of them just recently got promoted to sergeant. It's kind of difficult for a sergeant to work in that capacity. So we're sending another one of our traffic officers through the training, and it takes a great deal of training and time to become a recognized court expert in reconstruction. But we're working through that and trying to make sure that we don't fall behind that curve either, so. Then I want to talk just briefly about a couple of things that we started doing again in 2017. Not that we weren't arresting DUIs prior to 2017, we certainly were, but we had not participated in DUI checkpoints for several years, for, for a lot of reasons. DUI checkpoints take a great deal of resources to run an actual DUI checkpoint. It takes anywhere from 45 to 60 personnel to work a DUI checkpoint, depending on if you're working a four-lane roadway. In one case, we worked the 6,000 block of Sheridan Boulevard, and that's closer to a 60-person operation. So we, obviously, we don't have the resources to do that. So we incorporate with other agencies to help us out, or likewise, we'll help them out with the DUI checkpoint in their jurisdiction as well. And frankly, anymore, when we do a DUI checkpoint, they're more of a moving DUI checkpoint. We'll work an area for an hour or an hour and a half, mainly because of social media. We spend a little bit of time in an area and people get on their phones and start letting everybody else know, "Hey, avoid 60th and Sheridan because there's a DUI checkpoint there." And so we move it around, we'll even move it from one city to the next throughout a single evening. And we participated in several of those multi-jurisdictional checkpoints in 2017, and then we also did several multi-jurisdictional saturations, and you may have seen some of those results even in the news after we did those. And then one of the other areas that our traffic unit concentrates, multi-jurisdictional as well, is, is some of our bordering streets like Sheridan Boulevard. We may do a joint speed operation, or we've had quite a few We may do a joint speed operation, or we've had quite a few crashes, both on our side and the Westminster side, at 80th and Sheridan. So, we'll work in conjunction with them and try to work a high visibility, high enforcement time period with them. One of the recent ones that our traffic unit worked as well was up and down highway, State Highway 93. Five agencies participated in a speed enforcement there for about four and a half hours, a couple of months ago, and in four and a half hours wrote in excess of 110 speeding tickets. We get a lot of complaints on Highway 93 about speeding, and if you've ever driven it, I'm sure you've seen it as well. So, that's just a little bit of what we're doing with DUIs last year and now, starting this year, in fact, just started the day before yesterday. On Saturday night, we now have a full-time officer that we decided to take one of our traffic resources and convert that to a full-time DUI officer who's going to be working Wednesday through Saturday from 5:00 in the afternoon until 3:00 in the morning. So, I'll be interested to see how that also helps both our DUI mitigation in the city and see whether or not we continue to see a rise in DUI arrests. And then, one of the things that I didn't have incorporated on the slide that we're also doing is, our traffic unit's been using e-ticketing devices for some time. We just recently purchased some additional e-ticketing devices so that they can be doled out to everyone on patrol on a daily basis so that they can take them out. They were all trained. Like, I believe the last training was just accomplished about two weeks ago. So, all of our patrol officers now are trained up and using the e-ticketing devices. It will also help our court system because the tickets can be downloaded much quicker, and then folks can come in, and if they choose to pay, they can pay much sooner than what we've been able to do in the past. And then kind of the final component, and Adam's going to come up and talk a little bit about his piece on this as well, and then any questions that you might have, is the education piece. And we certainly try to do as much as we can in education. We look at sharing data. There's various ways that the public can go in and look at our data. Public meetings, most of the commanders, and we try to get officers involved as well to attend public meetings, talk about, we very often get asked about, what are the traffic circumstances? How are we handling a particular stop sign, those types of things? Try to talk to people and let them know, too, that they're, a lot of times, our best eyes as well. Let us know what they're seeing. Our social media, we try to put that out as often as we can as well, talking about what we're doing with those. We have a traffic component in our Citizen Police Academy where they talk to them about, and that's our traffic unit does that component, and they talk about their responsibilities. Our school resource officers certainly are engaged with their communities in traffic safety. One of the examples that we recently did, again, along 64th Avenue, we were seeing that a lot of those accidents were involving younger drivers. And so, at Arvada West, and a lot of those were distracted driving citations and distracted driving tickets, I'm sorry, and crashes. So, we passed out flyers letting them know, here's some of the consequences of getting a citation, and even worse, some of the consequences of being involved in a traffic crash.
Thank you, Gary. As he mentioned, we do outreach. Some of that has occurred at homeowners association meetings. Councilmember Ford and I have attended those together where we, the police department and traffic engineering, will meet directly with those concerned residents and see what we can do to alleviate their concern. We have a bank training facility that's across the street from the Costco, just west of Wadsworth, south of West 52nd Avenue. That's intended to help school-aged children and, well, and really our entire community have a place to learn to ride, to understand what stop signs mean, where we would like for you to stop, where you would ride within a bicycle lane. And then we have citizen advisory committees that we regularly meet with, transportation advisory committees, if you will, residents, and to come and say, "This is what we think you should be doing for your projects." And so, we take that very seriously. Do you guys have some questions for us?
Questions from council? Mr. Councilmember McGough?
Yes, thank you. I have a question for Commander Hutchcraft. I'm just wondering, I think in the past, at some time, we were doing inspections of large vehicles, trucks for safety features on them and making sure that the operators of those vehicles were properly licensed. Is that still happening?
It does. It does still happen. In fact, we tried to do port of entry, what we call a port of entry for the major vehicles. We tried to do those three or four times a year. It's getting a little bit more difficult because of the area that you have to have to set up multiple large trucks, if you get several pulled over. But we did four in 2017. I know that we have one scheduled, I believe it's in March of this year. We have to do those in conjunction with CDOT and then also with Colorado State Patrol. And yeah, we're, once we set those up, we can go out within a five-mile radius of where we set up the base, if you will, for bringing those trucks back to that location. Generally speaking, very similar to what happens with a DUI checkpoint, we end up setting those up for a fairly short period of time because, again, the truck drivers are pretty good about notifying one another, "Hey, Arvada's running a port of entry, so stay away from whatever the area might be."
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be assured that those operations are still being conducted.
And they will continue to, because we end up writing multiple citations during those as well.
Councilmember Ford?
Commander Hutchcraft, I, on the Data Driven Efforts page, I noticed that the traffic accident types of the seven that were listed there, all of them have seen a reduction in 2017 from 2016, except for number four, the parked motor vehicle. Can you please tell me what that means? Is that parked motor vehicles being hit by?
Yes, and that is, those are usually just a single moving vehicle that then strikes a parked motor vehicle.
Okay. And then I wanted to ask you, in terms of traffic safety, are you seeing any particular type of accident occurring more often now than you've seen in the past?
Well, and again, I think the chart that you just pointed out, it's the rear-end accidents that generally are a result of some type of distraction inside the vehicle. We're certainly seeing that more than what we have in years past. I think that's a matter of, you know, most everybody anymore has at least one phone in their car and some other device as well. So, you know, and those accidents are twice as frequent as any other crash within the city. But I think all in all, our, based on our population growth, we're staying about the same, pretty consistent with our accident and crash types and where they're occurring and things of that nature. They have ticked up a little bit, but again, our volume has ticked up as well.
And how about with the opioid crisis? Are you seeing more accidents as a result of people being on opioids?
Our accident data is, again, it's pretty similar to what we've seen in the past. We are not seeing a drastic increase in accidents that are involved with the driver being impaired by some type of drugs. Our percentages kind of stay the same. They may, the numbers may go up a little bit, but the percentages of our overall crashes are staying about the same from what we've seen over about, I would say, about the last 10 years.
Okay. And then I have one more question for Adam. Adam, one of the things that has crossed my mind recently is that it may be possible, it's something I've thought of, that with our population aging, are you finding that the research being conducted by these organizations for traffic safety, that they're taking into account an aging population?
Yes, they are. It's something that we talk about regularly in the traffic engineering community. It's something that was talked about a lot when we implement the flashing yellow arrows at our traffic signals that we didn't used to see. Believe it or not, the, one of the driving factors for that was aging population. Even though folks weren't used to it, the older drivers, for some reason, showed a higher compliance rate for that, and that was one of the driving factors when those were studied. So, they do take that into account. And it's, there's regular dialogue occurring that we have to bring that to the forefront of our discussions, that it doesn't seem as though the millennials are having challenges making their way through roundabouts or something new that's introduced, because we do have new devices and, you know, like those flashing yellow arrowheads. It's our older drivers that need to be educated and definitely that dialogue is occurring. Here at the city, we're aware that our driver population, or excuse me, age is increasing, and where I see it is a dialogue about intersection site distance. We talk about it at the city a lot. It comes up most often in my world that folks may be not feeling comfortable pulling out from a stop sign, and what can we do about that? Because they do, oftentimes, the intersections or locations might meet every bit of the letter of the law for our criteria, but these concerns persist. So, that's where we might set aside some of our typical parts of our formula and say, "Let's think outside the box here."
And one of the things that I've often thought of, too, is just older people crossing the street, you know, they may walk slower. You have faster driving, I think, sometimes today. And, you know, another, you probably have heard of this one because this was a constituent's comment regarding a particular area in District 1 where they were, where they're trying to get out of a stop, you know, that's, that is after a major curve. And one of the things that I've, you know, came up was, you know, do people with physical limitations? And it doesn't necessarily, one doesn't have to assume that it's only older people, of course, but, you know, where your body is stiffer, maybe it takes you a little longer to move your neck, your timing may be a little bit slower, so, you know, they may get freaked out more by speeding cars, and, you know, they're a little more cautious coming out. So, all those potential, what, issues, you know, I think, I'm hoping that we're really, not just us, I mean, you know, that the traffic standards are really considering all those issues today.
They are, and it's, you know, we, we're talking more and more about complete streets. So, what happens when you choose to not drive? Can you still get there? Are there bike lanes if you want to ride your bicycle? Is the sidewalk wide enough if you choose to walk to Walgreens instead of driving? You know, considering multimodal travel, accessibility to our transit hubs, transit stations, if you will, all that's part of that same level of dialogue with respect to older drivers, is what are their options? And that we are talking about a lot. One of the good things about traffic engineering is we're very much concerned with Americans with Disabilities Act, accessibility. And part of that is, well, we used to only have enough, the countdown timer that says you can cross the street, and it's counting down from 20 to 19 to 18. Those all now provide much more time than they used to, just maybe when I entered the business 20 years ago. We now design for the disabled person where we used to consider them. That's awesome. That's what we should be doing. Because sometimes those disabled folks might be disabled because of age and not because of an injury, and it might be slowly occurring. And so, what are their options? Again, that's what we do talk about regularly here in traffic.
That's good. Thank you.
Councilmember Jones?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions and then a couple of comments. And by the way, my son has just got his learner's permit, and he's really confused by those flashing yellow lights. Anyway, that's a whole nother.
Give me my number.
What's that?
Give me my number.
Okay, that's a whole nother story. They need to teach that in driver's ed. So, obviously, one of the things I've worked on over the last couple of years is helping people understand from an education perspective, what's a city road versus a county road versus a state road? And we have several of those intersections throughout our city. What's your experience working with CDOT and with the county on certain issues, whether it be lighting or traffic safety or any of the above? Anything that you could think of? Are they easy, hard, slow, fast?
So, they're relatively easy to work with. Jefferson County is more, I guess, invested in us because we're a sister agency within their county, where CDOT might be more interested in regional traffic, getting them between the cities, if you will, you know, thinking about getting from Wheat Ridge to Westminster through Arvada and what they can do along Wadsworth to help that. In our unincorporated areas, the borders of our city, you know, those are more, we start to get into local roads and smaller roads and smaller intersections, a more intimate setting, if you will, closer to our homes. And that's where we tend to work with Jefferson County a little closer. I spoke to them this week about the town of Lyden and site distance downtown in that small community and speeding through there because it's in both unincorporated Jefferson County and Arvada. And so, in that case, Derek Schuler, the traffic engineer there, and I work really closely together. I met today with CDOT on the corner of West 56th and Wadsworth to talk about the Old Town Transit Hub and what's that traffic signal going to, do we be operating like? What happens when the G-line opens? And CDOT was proactively meeting with us today to talk about that. So, you know, they're helpful, but I think in terms of who do we talk more with, there's really not a good answer. You know, Ward Road and Sheridan, those are all state highways. And so, we do chat with them regularly, and they're a good neighbor.
Thank you for that. The second question, kind of follow-up to traffic counts. I know, and I can't remember where, but I know that on the city website, you can drill down and look at a stretch of road like on 72nd from Ward Road to Sims', and you could see what the traffic counts are on that particular stretch of roads. How often is that data updated? And is it, well, I'll just leave it at that.
Sure. So, some data is collected on our major corridors by Dr. Cog, the Denver Regional Council of Governments guys that I talked to about, or talked to earlier when I said they re-timed our West 80th and West 72nd corridor, 64th. They will proactively go out and do that themselves.
Just site count?
Yeah, so they'll drop tube counters on to say how many cars per day are coming through here, so they can say, "How, is this traffic up or down from last year?" And then we also provide them counts, and we meet with them once a month to talk about their needs. We talk about regional growth, regional traffic operations, if you will. So, we try to update that data. We've been concentrating a lot more on focusing on, instead of saying, "Hey, let's go out and count along this corridor," we've been really responding to Ask Arvadas and kind of getting entrenched into the concerns, the complaints in a reactionary mode and working to provide more data to Dr. Cog in the future to get, I guess, out in front of them a little bit. But we're regularly collecting data all over the city. We do it proactively as part of a count program, but more specifically, we most oftentimes do it because of Ask Arvadas and working with the police department where they need the data. So, we collect it where the concerns are coming in right now.
Okay, thank you. And then just two comments. Thank you, Adam, for the work that you do. I recognize that sometimes we, me, play traffic engineer, and so, thank you for letting me do that on occasion a couple of times a month. And, but I, you know, this was a really good update because I, I'm hoping that people begin to understand more of what your department does on behalf of the citizens. I think you really, my sense is that you really do care about safety, and you really do care about people moving through the city, and you really do care about all of the things that people's care about. And so, I appreciate that. And then to Commander Hutchcraft, I can't, I'll take every opportunity I can to publicly thank our men and women in blue for the work and the safety that you provide to the city. You know, having spent some time with some of the sergeants on ride-alongs and traveling around the city and then seeing the work that's being done with the DPIs, it's just another kind of testament to the work that our department's doing. And all the stuff that's going on behind the scenes, I mean, we see them out in the cars and driving and doing, writing tickets and those kinds of things, but it's the stuff behind the scenes that I don't think most people really understand that you're doing on our behalf day-to-day. So, thank you very much for the work that the department's doing on that.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Maxwell. I want to go back to the flashing yellow arrows. So, I can remember when those weren't around, and of course, now they are in a lot of locations. It was my hope that at least in some locations, they would... It was my hope that at least in some locations, they would provide additional or more turning opportunities, but it doesn't seem like they do. It seems like they provide the same turning opportunities that were before, or maybe sometimes less, and, and because, of course, I'm mostly concerned about myself, I'll tell you about my favorite one, which is on 52nd Avenue heading east just before you get to Wadsworth, that's the turn where Costco is, but if you, if you're going east and you want to turn left, you're turning left into the Home Depot parking lot. And I realize you have to cross two lanes of traffic there, but to me, that seems like an ideal spot for a yellow arrow, a flashing yellow arrow. Currently, the current situation is it's either green arrow you can turn, or no green arrow and you can't turn, so it's a green, left on green only. But a lot of times, certainly not during rush hour, you can see all the way to Wadsworth, you can't, there's not a car as far as you can see, and to me personally, not being a traffic engineer, seems like an ideal place for a flashing yellow arrow to provide additional opportunities as opposed to, as opposed to the same opportunity. And I know there must be some logic to why they're, why they exist in places and why they don't exist in other places. And I wonder if you could just elaborate on that, just, just a little bit. I'm not asking you to go put a flashing yellow arrow there, I'm just trying to understand, well, I am kind of asking that.
Noted.
But, but, but just provide us with a little information about the logic of why they exist in some places and not, and not in other places, what the, what the plan for that is.
Sure. So, the intent of the flash, there's, there's two types of flashing yellow arrowheads. There's one with three, so there's a red arrow, a yellow arrow, and a green arrow, and there's another one with a red arrow, a yellow flashing, and a yellow solid, and a green arrow. There's four. The one that has four operates like our normal, what we used to call our doghouse-style traffic signal heads. They look like Snoopy's doghouse. Those are the ones that we've been replacing with flashing yellow arrows because the federal government has said, this is safer. When we get highway safety improvement project funds, federal grants, they mandate that we put those in. That's part of it. Hey, you have a bunch of crashes? We say at the Federal Highway Administration that this fixes them or reduces them, so we'll give you the money to do that. So that's oftentimes how they get in there, is that when looking at an old traffic signal or an area where there's crashes, that's the tool in the toolbox that we reach for, that funding source will identify, this is what we think you should do, and if you accept these monies, you will do it. And the location where you're talking about, that was put in by my predecessor, so I don't know the exact reason. But typically, when that arrowhead is there not allowing you to make that movement, forgive the expression, it's oftentimes in response to some, response to some bonehead behavior. If folks keep making left turns and getting ran into, we won't allow them to make that left turn. That's oftentimes why that happens. By default, when there's two left turns, and we, two left turn bays right next to each other, and one of those might creep out into the intersection and you can't see, obstructing the other car, typical practices, you get an arrow and you wait. I'm not a big fan of doing that. I am going to look at the one at Home Depot, that's my Home Depot, because we should have more permissive ones, more ones that you have an opportunity that if someone isn't coming to make that left turn. And what we're doing in the city now is we are changing from some three-section flashing arrowheads to fours, so that at midnight, you don't wait. At Saturday at 10:00 in the morning, you don't wait. On Sunday, going to church, you don't wait. But at 5:00 o'clock on Friday, you wait. At 8:00 o'clock on Monday morning, you wait. So as part of that Sentrac system that I showed you with the screen that said, this is how we control our traffic signals, we can use that right at our desks to say, okay, then, don't allow that term into, turn into Home Depot when everybody's going and coming from work. But in the middle of the day, why not? And that's how we would do it. We would program it from our desk. So we are proactively going back and looking at some of our corridors. We talked about West 58th Avenue, and we're starting to, now that we've got 80th, 72nd, 64th, and 58th done essentially, before we come back into 80th, looking at our east-west streets, we are starting to look in smaller neighborhoods now on our collector roads and say, how is this working? How are we doing? Is this, did it make it more safe, but then people have bonehead behavior and run the red light because they don't want to wait? That's what we're asking ourselves now and taking a look at, since the federal government said this worked, how do we feel about it?
Okay, great, thank you. That's great information, I appreciate that. One other question. The most frequent constituent inquiry that I respond to is, or complaint, is people about speeding through neighborhoods, or speeding through my house, speeding through the street my house is on, or, and can't you do something about it? And I know we have, the traffic department goes out and does studies to see if that's really true, and I know the police department goes out and increases patrol and observes to see if that's really true. But it seems like one of the things that, that everybody who complains, oftentimes what they're angling for, and it does seem like they work, is these radar speed signs that give a readout to how fast you're going. And I understand those are, we have those, we use those, I think mostly on a temporary basis-
Yes.
-and that they move around. And I understand those are a maintenance issue and a, you know, upkeep, upkeep issue and all that. But have we ever thought about doing something like, like we do with sidewalks, like a 50-50 program or something where a, a neighborhood or a neighborhood association can get together, and if they really believe they need it, even if it may not quite meet what, what the city traffic engineering department thinks needs? But some way for them to acquire one of those and contribute to the cost of it, contribute to the maintenance of it, and, and have, you know, more of a role in, in, in them deciding what hap, you know, some of the traffic controls that happen on their streets, certainly not all of them.
Sure.
We can't let people do that, but, but have some input on it. Are there any, you know, do, do other cities do that? Have you heard of programs like that? Is there any, any kinds of-
They do.
-creative ways that can be proactive?
Golden has some decision-making processes that are, that put some of that on the residents, that they can pay for some traffic calming devices that they also have to maintain. There's a particular road in, in Golden that has medians, if you will, installed right in front of someone's home, and they put the flowers in, they maintain the shrubs that are in that. And that was part of the agreement that they had when the city, in that instance, Golden, installed those. So they, we are looking at what other communities have done. We, we don't want to have a knee-jerk reaction and just install, for instance, speed humps or something. We know that Boulder has, is taking them out as quickly as they've put some of them in. So we are having dialogue to say, well, what tools are in our toolbox now? When, when can we leave these speed display signs? When, because they do lose effectiveness, but sometimes the perception of safety is very important to people. We are finding that they do work limited amounts, but keeping them on the same spot for the, for a long time isn't real effective. So we're in the very, I guess, infancy of that. Since I've been here in the, just a little under a year, we've raised that level of, of dialogue to say, you know, who are we? Do we have a traffic calming program? As we deal with increased traffic, regional traffic, you know, how will we respond? So, there isn't a program, as you're aware of now, but we are having dialogue to say, what are some of the successes that other folks are having on the front range, and can we do that, something similar?
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions. Anyone on council have any more questions? Okay, anything from the staff? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
You guys.
I think we'll take one more quick stand-in-place break here, and then we'll take on our last workshop for the night.
Good, good, good. Thank you. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mayor Protem and members of the council. We're going to have Board Chair, our Board Chair, Fred Jacobson, make this presentation or begin this presentation.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, Marriott, and City Council.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. We are here tonight to give you another update on urban renewal activities in the city and what we're up to, just to make count, make sure the council's informed. So tonight, we have kind of an exciting presentation for you. We recently hired Development Research Partners to do a little bit of research on the investment that we're making in the Arvada community. And as you know, our main mission at Urban Renewal is to remediate blight. That's the number-one thing that we're responsible for in adding value to the community. And I think that we have some exciting figures to share with you this evening. In addition to doing that, we've been able to bring some economic development to the, to the city. Now, that isn't our major, it isn't our major goal to do that. Our major goal, again, is to, to take care of the blight. So we would like to go through and kind of show you some of those things, and I'm going to let Maureen give the introduction for Development Research Partners.
Good evening, Ms. Fair.
Good evening, it's good to be here.
Good to see you.
Is everybody excited? It was kind of long. Let's be, you're going to be up for this. Okay, so I'm here to introduce Patty Silverstein. I think you guys all know her because she's a rock star in the area. She's with Development Research Partners, and she, every year about this time for the next two months, goes on the roadshow, and she gives a presentation a couple times a week for two months on the economic forecast for Colorado and Denver. So we're very lucky to have her do this study for us. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Patty to give our good news.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem, councilmembers. I am delighted to be here to share with you our ideas about economic impact of Aurora, oh, thank you. I'm a little vertically challenged, to share with you our, our views on the economic impact of the Aura activities. So just a little bit about why I'm talking about this. Development Research Partners, we're a 23-year-old company based here in Jefferson County. We do economic and demographic research, industry studies, fiscal and economic impact studies, real estate analysis. And it's our, our fiscal and economic impact studies and our real estate analysis expertise that brought us here tonight. My business partner and life partner, Jesse Silverstein, has really been the lead on this project, and unfortunately, he is out of town, so I am really kind of pinch-hitting for him, but again, I'm delighted to be here. I am the president and chief economist with Development Research Partners and have kept, you know, very close tabs on this project all the way through. So, so what are we talking about here? How is it that these projects bring us some economic impact? Well, when we have the Arvada Urban Renewal Authority that is investing in your community, what they're hoping to do is to leverage, then, these private sector dollars. And indeed, that's what we were looking at in this study, is to make sure that as, as the Urban Renewal Authority is investing in a various parcel of, parcel of land, project within the community, making sure that indeed those private dollars are following through, that those private dollars, those private investors are coming in and really helping to create the vision for the city that the urban renewal has been looking at. And indeed, when we take a look at some of these urban renewal projects, these development areas, there is four main development areas that we are focused on in this study, Old Town, Ralston Fields, Village Commons, and the city center, all of these urban renewal areas. Notice that the amount of dollars, those private dollars that have been invested for every single dollar from the Urban Renewal Authority does indeed range from about $2 on the city center projects, all the way up to well over $10 on the Old Town area. And some of, you know, the, the differences are going to lie in some of the, the development deals, the success of the projects, and also how the city, or how the Urban Renewal Authority has been involved in a particular project there. So I want to take a step here, first of all, and tell you the, kind of the big picture of what we're going to be looking at, and then we'll delve into kind of the nitty-gritty of how did we get there. So first of all, in terms of the benefits to the city, in, in terms of these various four urban renewal development areas, 1,785 new housing units have been brought to the city of Arvada, and these households generate about 17.5 million in taxable spending within the community. 125 million that has been invested in infrastructure and public improvements everywhere, everything from those roads, those sidewalks, flood control, environmental mitigation. That's what we're trying to make sure, too, that all of these community assets are developed within the area. 13 million in investments in other community benefit projects, those parks, those plazas, fountains, streetscapes, all of those types of things that the Urban Renewal Authority has indeed been bringing, investing into the community. So how do we get these numbers? How do we, how is it that we're, we're bringing all of this information to you? Well, we're looking at it from an economic impact standpoint. What that means is I'm looking at business-to-business spending, resident-to-business spending. What is that economic activity that is generated in your community because of these urban renewal projects? So we're focused on not only that initial investment on those projects, but the business operations. As we have a new business that is brought into an urban renewal area, they hire employees, they're purchasing goods, services to keep their businesses up and running, they're paying taxes. Those employees, then, that are received, that are the, the workers at these businesses are taking their dollars, spending it throughout the community, many of these folks also living within your community, and so paying all, paying all sorts of property tax and other taxes as well. The residents, those folks, that, all of those new households that the urban renewal projects have brought in, those residents are bringing their income into your community, spending dollars within the local community, and also generating tax revenue. And then also, some projects involve visitors, such as with the, the hotel project. Those visitors are bringing new dollars into the community, also supporting retail restaurants, all of our businesses here in Arvada. So that's what we're trying to measure. What are all these cycles? What are all these dollars that are being generated? We're also focused in terms of looking at that return on public investment. We recognize that there are a lot of dollars that are being invested in these urban renewal projects, and we want to make sure that indeed, the private dollars are following those, that there is a return, recognizing that the city revenue that may be used to allow some of these urban renewal projects, such as that property tax revenue, that sales tax revenue, that's not the only revenue that is associated with a given project, and we're going to look at some of those. And also realizing that, that once a project is indeed completed, once it has gone through that whole 25-year TIF period, there's that bounce back. Those dollars, those, those property tax dollars, those sales tax dollars, all come back to the city, and what is the influence of that? One of the main concepts in looking at this is the city revenues net of TIF. So as I had mentioned, when we take a look at these projects, oftentimes, it's going to be that property tax revenue or that sales tax revenue that is indeed targeted or earmarked for the tax increment financing. But again, there is other revenue that is being generated from these businesses, from these individuals. There's use tax. Use tax typically is not going to be earmarked for any type of TIF. There's auto-use tax. There's specific ownership tax. There's utility franchise fees, all of those businesses that are paying taxes on, on their communications, their utilities, et cetera, those franchise fees. Other tax revenue admissions, cigarette taxes, severance taxes, fees for various services, we talk about all of the building permit fees, various licenses, court binds, this whole array of revenue that we're trying to look at to say, it is not just the property tax, the, the sales tax that is associated with this, but also this whole array of other revenues. The Jefferson County open space, Jefferson County road and bridge, those are, are some of- The Jefferson County open space, Jefferson County Road and Bridge, those are some intergovernmental finance transactions that occur. And we worked very closely with your city finance department to make sure that we were really treating all of these various revenue sources and the expenditure patterns appropriately throughout this whole process. So, we're going to be looking at then that whole revenue from a project, subtracting out all of the TIF, those TIF earmarked pieces, the property tax revenue, the sales tax revenue, to determine then what the city also is receiving as annual city revenue net of TIF. These projects then are going to be looking at both the direct and the indirect influences. In economic theory, our direct is that first initial business, but the indirect are all the employee expenditures, et cetera, that are related to that business as well. There's a whole kind of multiplier theory, or a ripple effect of these expenditures that we typically talk about in economic theory. While we're not going into the whole multiplier, we're just trying to bring in some of those first level by looking at some of the employees. And again, as I mentioned, once that TIF period ends, all of that incremental property and sales tax being brought back into the city. So, with that, that's kind of the methodology, that's what we're going to be looking at. I want to walk you through the four different Urban Renewal areas, just to talk about what some of the results are from these, what is going on within these various projects. So, first of all, our Ralston Fields Urban Renewal Area. This is an area that has seen many different projects, from the Target Center, Arvada Station Apartments, Gateway at Arvada Ridge, Arvada Plaza, or the Walmart there, and shops at Ralston Creek. Altogether, this area has seen the introduction of 680 new housing units, 416,000 additional square feet of commercial space. And that's primarily a mix of office and retail, the bulk of that certainly being more on the retail side. Total project cost of all of these various projects that have been introduced here, $227 million. Aura, the Urban Renewal Authority's, their participation has been about $32 million in these. And this $32 million in terms of public improvements, investment in public improvements, in terms of some of the TIF financing, even some, perhaps some loan originations as well. That means the remainder of this project, $194.6 million, has come through private developers. So, that's when we talk about leveraging those dollars. So, for every dollar that Aura put into these projects here, $6 has been invested by our private developers to, again, enhance these areas, to really infuse some new life into these various areas. In terms of the economic benefits then, again, these 680 new households, they have an average income of a little over $56,000, so giving us $38.2 million in overall household income that is now within this area. All of our households, they're going to spend part of their taxable dollars here in Arvada. They're also going to spend part of their taxable dollars elsewhere throughout the metro region, elsewhere in the world. So, certainly, in our whole analysis, we are trying to just target those dollars that are, in our estimation, are indeed spent here in the city of Arvada. And what we do, a kind of a whole process of looking at the retail capture here within the city, so about 55% of the retail spending being captured here, and then further reducing that, if you will, by that spending that is actually the taxable spending. All of that comes down to then, in taxable spending in those 680 households, about $6.6 million that is being spent with your Arvada businesses here. In terms of commercial, though, all of the retail, the office jobs that are located there in Ralston Fields, 1,200 workers that are located there, these 1,200 workers bringing in wages of about $32 million here in the city of Arvada. These businesses, in order to, for their day-to-day business operations, they're buying everything from chairs to desks, all of that furniture, fixtures and equipment, to things as mundane as paper and pencils. But all of that business spending, again, a lot of that being transacted with your businesses here in Arvada, spending by businesses about $6.6 million. From this, we derive the sales tax increment, the sales tax increment being derived from that, the amount of sales tax that is being generated within the Ralston Fields area, the property tax increment being related to both the residential property tax, as well as the business real and personal property tax. So, even when we take out those increments, we are still left with city revenues of about $2.7 million each year in this area. So, another way of looking at this, in terms of this whole private investment that we have at Ralston Fields, about 14% of this whole investment coming from the Urban Renewal Authority, 86% coming from private dollars into this area. And again, showing all of the revenue that is derived, all of the city revenue associated with the workers, the residents within this area, of about $6.2 million total. Again, part of that, the sales tax increment, the property tax increment, going back to Aura for investment in that area versus the city maintaining $2.7 million in city revenues and fees. Before I continue into some of the other Urban Renewal areas, I just want to make sure that you're following the process here and to see if there are any questions that you might have so far.
Any questions by council? Councilmember Ford?
One quick question. Is there data that looks at the percentage of money spent within the area where a person lives versus what they spend when they're commuting for work?
So, what we assume in our modeling is that individuals spend, so out of your whole total income, we're assuming that a resident here in the city of Arvada will spend about 55% of their retail activity here. And that's based on a leakage analysis for the city, looking at, you know, the typical household expenditures. Can they conduct those expenditures here, or are there perhaps not the vendors or that type of thing? So, we assume that about 55% of the taxable spending is happening here in Arvada, or, excuse me, 55% of the household spending happening in Arvada. And then, out of that, about 31% is on taxable goods and services, because not all of the dollars that a household spends, it's going to be subject to sales tax. So, those are the estimations that we use based on data here.
Any other council questions at this time? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So, let me just then quickly, the other three Urban Renewal areas that we're going to highlight here, it's all kind of the same process. I'm not going to walk through it line item by line item quite as detailed as I did on the others. So, the Village Commons Urban Renewal Area, this is the Hilton Garden Hotel. So, we have 139-unit hotel there, that total project cost, $22.5 million. Aura's participation in this, $3.8 million. The rest of that coming through private dollars. So, we see that for every dollar that Urban Renewal invested, that we had almost $5 that was brought in by private dollars. In terms of the economic benefits of this project then, we have 30 jobs, the total wages of about $842,000. This also brings visitor spending into the area. So, not only do we have the spending of the hotel as a business, the spending of the employees, but also these folks that will now come in and stay at the hotel, these dollars are also new dollars into Arvada that are being spent throughout the community there, to the tune of about $1.9 million. Again, a sales tax increment related to the amount of dollars that are being generated here. In this case, it is really the city lodging tax, as well as some of the city sales tax associated with the hotel typical room nights there, city property tax as well. And again, even taking out our increment values, still left with about $70,000 in revenue to the city that is being generated from our employees, from the business itself. Again, looking at it a slightly different way, about 17% of this whole investment at the Village Commons area came through the Urban Renewal Authority, with 83% through private investment. And again, the breakout on the various sources of revenue, again, recognizing that even withholding the various TIF, that there is about $70,000 in revenue that is being generated. Our Old Town Station, these projects that we're looking at here, there are two residential projects, Park Place Old Town, as well as Solana Old Town Station. Notice that in the projects that we are looking at, these are projects, by the way, that were city council-approved and have been either completed or under construction. Those were kind of the criteria for what projects we were looking at in terms of inclusion in this study. So, 505 housing units, $112 million project. The leveraging here, notice almost $11 of private investment for every dollar that the Urban Renewal Authority invested in this particular project. These 505 residents bring with them about $32 million in household income. And again, that whole similar type of process, it comes down to $5.5 million of taxable spending in Arvada. No additional commercial projects that are included in this analysis. So, we're looking at the tax increment, as well as then being the remainder, all of the new city revenues and fees associated with all of those residents that are now living in the Old Town Station area. Eight and a half percent of that whole investment then coming from the Urban Renewal Authority, 91 and a half percent coming from private dollars. Notice that in this particular case, again, that property tax increment being relatively small there, all the, really, the other city revenues and fees, again, being generated from those new residents in the area. And then, finally, the City Center URA. This one is a little bit different. This is your first Urban Renewal Area. This project was initially started in 1981, it expired in 2006. Please notice that the financing dollars and all that we have there are now $1995, trying to go back in time to look at some of the investments and all there. So, please don't be confused by that. Again, $1995 versus everything else that we've been looking at was in $2,007. You'll look at this and say, you know, here we see about $2 of private investment that was spent for every dollar of Urban Renewal participation. At this period of time, it was a very different type of Urban Renewal model. We actually had our Urban Renewal Authority that was doing a lot of the environmental remediation. They were building roads, they were doing flood mitigation, they were doing all of those projects that these days tends to fall more on the shoulders of the developers within that area. But again, that was that whole kind of model of participation back at that period of time. Again, in this area, about 600 new households, all of the new square footage that was developed there, supporting about 4,700 employees in the community. And notice now that all of that city sales tax, all of that property tax that had been diverted as part of the Urban Renewal investment is now coming to the city. So, that's that whole bounce back as we successfully complete these various projects. So, again, in 2016, now, City Center generated about $34 million in total sales taxes, about $15 million of that to the city of Arvada. 291 new businesses, 4,700 new jobs, all of these employees earning about $173 million. And just as one kind of way to really drive it home as to how this Urban Renewal investment has really helped to create a gem within your city, look back in 1981, next to nothing being generated here, because this was primarily vacant land or old beat-up properties, again, blighted area, versus today, we see all of the sales tax revenue being generated for the city of Arvada, as well as our other taxing jurisdictions, the state of Colorado, Jeffco Open Space, our Scientific and Cultural Facilities District, and the Regional Transportation District. But again, of course, being really the main focus there is what did the city of Arvada receive? And again, from next to nothing to now receiving about $15 million a year in sales tax from that area. So, with that, that is just that whole kind of glimpse as to why Urban Renewal does it the way we do it here. We want to make sure that we are jump-starting these projects. We want to make sure that we are allowing the private investment to really develop these properties in the manner that the community wants to see and is useful for the community. Our final report is scheduled for a February delivery, but this was just kind of a preview of some of the numbers. Thank you.
Okay. Questions from council? Okay, councilmember Ford?
Always have a question. Patty, one of the things that I've been weighing in my mind is, when we bring in development, how do we look at the cost of that development in terms of, you know, revenue versus cost?
Sure. Typically, one of the processes that we use in looking at the cost of development is by taking, really taking a look at the city budget and allocating those costs according to business uses, as well as according to residential uses. That's going to vary throughout every community, really depending upon the level of services and all that various cities provide. In the city of Arvada, it is about 91% of the city budget, in our estimation, is allocated according to residential uses, with the remainder then to business uses. And that makes sense because, you know, with 115,000 people here and about 15,000, as I recall, businesses here, that you would, certainly, I'm sorry, 27,000 employees that are located here in Arvada, that certainly that would make sense, that allocation. There's always the question, then, when we take a look at it, we're oftentimes looking at it from an average cost standpoint. The big challenge out there is also, how do you look at it as a marginal cost? There are some sunk costs, and there are other costs that are indeed going to vary according to new residents, new businesses. So, it is a process, and it is a very good question about making sure that all of your costs of development or costs of providing services are indeed covered.
Okay. Other council questions?
Patty, I have one, and that's, you know, one of the arguments for Urban Renewal is the "but for" argument, that but for this investment, none of this new would happen. But I think the reality is, in a no Urban Renewal environment, some of these investments would happen. Do you have any way of quantifying that? Is there comparative analysis that can be done? Or how do you put some number on that?
Wow, great question, and one that is definitely a challenge to answer. I think that the best way to answer it is to look at how the market has been responding to a particular property. So, if a particular property has some type of environmental issues, or some type of issues related to prior uses, or if there's some type of issues related to the topography of the site, if you haven't necessarily been seeing a developer moving forward, it means that somehow they're running the numbers and recognizing that, "I can't make this pencil." And that's when the Urban Renewal Authority oftentimes will take over to say that, "We need to assist this, to make this so that the developer can indeed make a reasonable investment here, make a reasonable profit." I don't know, Maureen, is there anything else that you would like to say about that?
If you think about the Triangle area, you know, and you wonder...
Come to the microphone if you would, please.
So, if you consider what Patty said, you know, if you look at the Triangle area and the three shopping centers that exist there, how long did it stay in that state? I think it was at the end of 1970s that the city put together a committee to take a look at those shopping centers, to say, "What can we do as a community to try and improve those?" That was at the end of 1970. And now, you look at Arvada Ridge, the old Ridge Home site, it sat in that state of falling down buildings for 20 years. So, there's a lot of examples. Where Solana is sitting today, what would that, and even where the hotel is sitting. You know, we tried for years. So, I think that that was a great example, is how long do these properties sit there? Why aren't developers coming in? do these properties sit there? Why aren't developers coming in and trying to do something with that property?
Okay. Councilmember Miller?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Silverstein. I love to hear from you, and I love having an outside perspective come in and take a look at urban renewal. And your presentation was fantastic, so thank you for that. What I would love to see now is maybe some of this marketing, using this material to market to the public. I know that most of Arvada is watching on TV tonight, but for the couple of people that are not, a few people have gone to bed already. Normally, I'm in bed by now. But for the few people that have not seen this workshop tonight, it would be great if we could get this information out on different medias out there. We should do such a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other council questions? Okay, anything else from staff?
No.
Go ahead, Ms. Baer.
Oh, wait, we're not done. Did Ms. Miller just say it's time for bed? Mine, too. Okay, we just want to leave you with another outreach. You know how we've been trying to get our message out to the public, and let them know what we're doing in a different way. So we have our latest video that we want to show you. And we are planning on doing some information with that. And it will be posted on our website. This PowerPoint will be posted on our website. And then once we get the report... Oh, wait, are we having technical difficulties?
Is Mr. Scruff, Ninja Tuna, is that like a staff thing that you do?
There we go, here we go.
My name's Edward Dimmer. I'm the owner and head baker of Rhinelander Bakery, along with my wife, Mauro Dimmer. We started the business in 1986, and we specialize in European style, predominantly German-style baking. We've actually watched the Old Town go from the city center to slowly becoming a deteriorating city center, and then rebuilt. This whole process started a very long time ago, and it was one of those that was slowly worked on by the community. So the community started, it worked with the ORA process through the whole time. There were just dozens, literally dozens of meetings, in which it was a process in which we were trying to learn, what are the actual needs in the area?
I started with Rhinelander Bakery about 30 years ago. And when I first came here, Old Town was a blighted area. There were a lot for sale, a lot for lease, and I didn't know a lot back then about how the community was running, but I learned really fast, because I was part of the bakery. And I worked intensely with promoting Old Town, because we figured out that the only way we're going to thrive would be to thrive with our area. And what we did is, we worked closely with the Arvada Urban Renewal Authority, and with the city of Arvada, to bring the merchants together in what is called historic Old Town, Arvada today.
We improved our streetscapes, wider sidewalks. We have beautiful floral arrangements throughout the city now, which we didn't have. There are a multitude of events every year that people really cherish, and they want to be there. If you're looking at what's happened across the street from us, the public open space, it has an open fountain. So every single nuance of the way that worked there, we actually worked with ORA on it. It was always available, they made themselves available. That doesn't happen all the time. It certainly happened in the case of ORA.
Our business has grown from a couple of employees to close to 20 right now. And our sales have also risen steadily, and all the merchants are working together down here to make sure that we keep a thriving community.
These are the things that we want as a community. We want to share them with our families. Arvada gets it, and it has worked brilliantly with the business community. The 12 years since ORA has been here, we've grown about 450 to 500%. So whether you're looking at property values, whether you're looking at rental rates, yes, they all go up. Why? Because it's successful.
Thank you all, we appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you for coming tonight. Okay, so that concludes our last workshop for tonight. Mr. Devon, any other thing for us?
No, thanks, Sam.
Okay. Mr. Betsing?
Nothing from the city attorney's office.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we're adjourned.